8:30. Good morning, everyone. Let's go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item on the agenda today is an approval of the agenda. A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Okay, the citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the county board on any item that is not advertised on the agenda? Any citizens wishing to address the board? Steve, have we had any online correspondence in regards to this?
I have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to approve payment of the bills and vouchers. A second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The minutes from the November 8th, 2022 commission meeting were included in the packet. Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the minutes as presented and a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item two today.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I move item two be removed from the table.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion offered from Commissioner Ebinger to remove the item from the table, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Madam Chair, based on some of the questions that were brought forward at last week's board meeting, we've continued to research some of those additional information and aren't prepared today to present that information to the board today. So I would recommend that we postpone this agenda item to a future meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, I would move that we take no action on this item today and postpone until our administrator collects additional information.
We have a motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to take no action on this.
Second.
A second offered from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you, Steve, and you can work in correspondence with the questions that we have and coordinating with Burns and McDonald.
I'll do that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item three today is a request for approval to appoint a Clay County Commissioner to the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors for 2023. Mr. Larson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you mentioned, we are looking for a designation for the Board of Directors for the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Group. Currently, Commissioner Ebinger holds that position. It's generally our position to not approve committee assignments until January. Having said that, we've made this one of these exceptions for the Greater Fargo-Moorhead in order to meet their bylaws. With that, yield for any questions.
Commissioner Ebinger, are you still wanting to resume this appointment?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do.
Thank you.
I move that we appoint Commissioner Ebinger to the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Board of Directors for 2023.
We have a motion to appoint Commissioner Ebinger, a continuation of his appointment to the EDC, or Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC for 2023, from Commissioner Campbell. A second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Commissioner Kaylee.
I just want to say that Commissioner Ebinger has been doing a fantastic job on that board, and we really have seen some movement with our priorities by having his voice on there. So pleased to have you continue that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chair, if I can.
Ask Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. While we're on this subject, I know that the appointment is on, there's an at-large position that comes from Clay, that has come from Clay County in the past, too. And I know Commissioner Kaylee has worked on that and served well in that capacity. I would hope that the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC will continue to have that second position available. And my hope would be is that Commissioner-elect Kravenhoff would be willing to also fill that position if it's approved by the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC. We don't have to take action on that today, but I just think that that would be a good fit for Mr. Kravenhoff, too.
Madam Chair, it's been indicated to me that that position will remain available.
Yes, I was also, I had a conversation with Joe Razzo at their annual banquet, and he also voiced his appreciation of having not only Commissioner Ebinger, but Commissioner Kaylee part of those discussions, and reiterated the importance of having two voices from Clay County present in those discussions. And also hopeful, I know that has to come from, the Chair of the Board of Directors has to approve that, but having, I think, followed with a comment from this board that we appreciate having two voices is important. Okay, and we did vote on that. Anything else, Commissioner Ebinger?
Just if I could, if the record could indicate, I abstained on the last vote.
Anything else? Thank you. Item four today is a request for approval to appoint planning commissioners. We have our planning director here today. We do have, Dave, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself to the board, Dave Steichen from Incorporated Dilworth. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So today, we have a request to appoint Dave Steichen to the Planning Commission, as well as reappoint Laura Johnson and Kurt Stubsted. Dave would be for his first, for one three-year term to the Planning Commission, and then Laura would be, it would be her second three-year term, and Kurt would be his third and final three-year term. So I want to thank Dave for coming. If you have any questions for Dave before we get going.
You want, I know you, obviously, and I think Commissioner Gross does as well. Do you want to give a brief introduction, as you did at the Planning Commission last week?
I push it.
It's green, yeah.
Morning, Clay County Commissioners and Chairwoman Jenny Mojo, I guess. I always have to think on that one.
That's okay.
My name's Dave Steichen, lived in Dilworth for 27 years, married to my wife, four grown kids, they're on their own. I've been on the Dilworth City Planning Commission for probably seven, eight years. And I've been to a few of these meetings and a few online, and it's, everything transfers quite well from what you do to what we do. But I have learned a fair amount from being with Matt and his, I shouldn't say Matt, Mr. Jacobson and his commission. So I'm kind of excited. I don't come in with any agendas. A little bit about me, I'm an Army veteran, worked for the post office in Fargo, been there for about 26 years. Used to drive truck over the road, had my own trucking, little trucking business. That's enough about me. I just, I know it's not necessary that I'm here, but it's kind of nice to see who people are, I guess, you know, this way and that way as well. So any questions, I'll certainly answer them.
So this did go before the Planning Commission, and there was a unanimous recommendation to appoint you to that position. As for the public watching, we try to have areas of all our incorporated cities represented on the Planning Commission, but also unincorporated rural areas. And even before you were appointed and/or elected, you're, I think, newly elected to the Dilworth City Council, you've been a very active resident, always taking interest in some of the issues that would affect your community particularly. So I believe you would be a great asset to that planning board.
Thank you. I don't intend to fill Bill's seat, but I will replace Bill, I guess.
Okay, Matt, would you like these all-in-one motions?
Yeah, we could do it all in one. And Madam Chair, I just want to also say that, just want to thank Bill Davis for his nine years on the Planning Commission. He is a very dedicated planning commissioner. I think he always went above and beyond to fully understand the applications and the issues that would come before that board. He was always visiting every site. He asked a lot of great questions. He did his research, and he'll be missed on the board and just really appreciate his service to Clay County.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I want to thank all three of them for stepping forward and being willing to serve in this public capacity. It's an important position that kind of helps guide our, all of what we do within the county. And so with that, I would move the slate of candidates as presented.
Okay. We have a motion to appoint Dave Steichen to a first three-year term, Laura Johnson to a second three-year term, and Kurt Stubsted to a third three-year term, from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Matt, I also want to, last week, we had a very large public hearing. There are some items in the code that we are updating, and your assistant, Erica, took over that evening because you were joining in virtually, and I just want to publicly thank you and her. She's a rock star. This room was full, and she got us through that meeting very effectively and clearly answered the questions and concerns of residents. And I just, I know that's outside of something that she particularly loves to do, but she did a great job. So please make sure and tell her our gratitude.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Mojo. I think, yeah, she's fantastic, wonderful person to have as part of Clay County. So really appreciate her stepping up when I was unable to do so.
Thank you.
I was going to mention, too, she did a great job that night answering the questions and stuff, and presented the program well. Did a great job.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Gross. I'll be sure to pass that along.
Thank you, Matt. We appreciate it. Okay, today we are, item number five is information on legislative initiatives. We are joined with State Representative Heather Keeler. Good morning, Heather. Congratulations on your newly reelection.
Hello. It feels weird having a computer here. I don't have anything to look at or share. I am though passing around, when we were here the last time, these weren't ready for print yet, but these are actually the legislative wrap-ups that I have from my first term. So it just talks about some of the things that we were actually able to get out the door in the first term. But I wanted to reach out, I know the last time we were here, we were kind of talking about what we did to wrap up the session, now that we know the landscape of what we're going back into. I really wanted to be intentional about building a better working relationship with all of you in the Clay County Commission. I feel like the first term, I went in in a pandemic, and that was, created challenges on its own, just learning how to do that system. And really, it wasn't until the end of my term that I really started to build some connections with all of you and learn what Clay County really needed. And so I guess, one, thank you to Commissioner Kaylee for all the work that you've done and helping to build the bridge for me to enter into some of those spaces. Sometimes I don't even really know where some of those meetings are happening. When we work in St. Paul, it feels really disconnected to your community at times. So I appreciate you opening the door for that. But that has given me great insight on some of the areas that I do really want to strongly address in the next two years. I'll be really transparent. I've asked for a lowercase, a lower committee load. Normally, you go in with four committees. I've had a pretty strong conversation with leadership asking for three. And the reason that I'm doing that is because I feel like it's important for me to be an effective legislator and leader of Morehead. I need to be in Morehead more than I am in St. Paul. And so with that, my goal is to be back in town by lunch every Friday. So if we have community meetings, or there's community issues, or things that I need to bring back to you all or other members of some of the boards that we have, we have that, we have that real-time capability. I feel like last time I was getting back late on Friday nights, leaving on Sunday evenings, and really missing this opportunity to engage. So I want to be very public and upfront with you all on what my theory is behind that, so it doesn't look like I'm just not showing up at the big tables. It's because I believe that these tables matter the most. And so we don't have our committee assignments at this time, but because of some of the concerns that I've heard out of this area, and it was in an email that I had sent to Colleen, and now I think maybe was sent out to you, that some of the initiatives mainly are really around our daycare crisis. It's one of the things that I heard a lot when I was out on the doors. It's some of the things that we've really heard in some of the conversations here. But looking at the numbers and looking at the data across the state, I really believe that Morehead is in a daycare crisis. We're missing out on 1,000, and that was even before this most recent daycare closed. We have 1,000 spots that are unfilled and incapable of being filled, and that, I think, impacts our economic development and what we can do in growing in the professional world if our children don't have access to daycare. So keeping that in mind, also, ICWA is something that I'm extremely passionate about. It's the Indian Child Welfare Act. If you've seen on a federal level, the state, or the Supreme Court is really potentially going after that at a federal level. So we're looking to protect that at a state level. If you're aware, Minnesota actually has the highest rate of out-of-home placement for Native American children in the nation. We're 17 to 1, which, for me, being a prior licensed ICWA mom, that's a concern. I've talked with Quinn here at the county, because they do ICWA audits every so often, and Clay County was 100%, which is great, but the way that we pull those is they only pull one case out of however many and review that one case, and we know that maybe that's not the most sufficient way. So really trying to look into that and having support of our county and the work that they do, knowing that the system needs to be better, we just don't know what we necessarily need to do there. So the committees that I am really vying for are, we have changed, it used to be called early childhood, now we're actually changing it to be child and family services, because we've advocated for this, that like preventing homelessness, daycare crisis, foster care, a lot of that is more than just early childhood. It's really those early tender years that we need to focus on with the families as well, along with human services, just because when we look at the combination of a lot of the needs that we have here, I realized it falls really under that human services umbrella. And as the Vice Chair of Preventing Homelessness last term, a lot of the issues that we had funneled up to human services. So I'm trying to trade off some of the things that I did last year to end up at some of those bigger tables that I feel like a lot of our county issues actually do fall under. And then the last thing is education policy. You know, education is something that's really huge for us, the lack of supports that we have, but also the greater Minnesota learning opportunities, I think we're missed a lot. And so trying to be voices at those tables. But as I mentioned when I was here before, really the big push that I have is making Greater Minnesota heard in this process. You know, a lot of it is like, we can do bills and we can maneuver, but also I believe that it's our job to look at the system and reflect on how we can be better. And so we did surveys last year with members, stakeholders, and staff, and 72% of individuals agree that we need to have hybrid options for our committee hearings. And that is mainly so that your voices can be heard, our, you know, Clay County, Morehead, our voices can be heard at the table. If you all know, we have session from January to May, which in the state of Minnesota, that's some of the worst driving weather. Distance-wise, geographically, it takes us three and a half hours one way just to get to the Capitol for maybe a five-minute moment in front of a committee to testify. And though we know that that's ideal, it shouldn't be the only option for our voice to be heard when we're making decisions. And so it's, to me, it was one thing for me to be at the tables. The second part is making sure that I find pathways to make sure our entire community can be at the tables. And so with my opportunity to take a reduction and only do three committees, I'm going to be strongly leading the task force to try to implement some hybrid options for us. Hopefully, that can be done even this first year of the term. I think in COVID, we learned that hybrid is option. We just heard in the last meeting that there needed to be a hybrid option, and I know that there was some interest expressed as far as the county levels and commission levels of some hybrid options as well. I think it's a new time, and I think technology can equip us in making sure that everybody, even from an ADA accessibility lane, it's really important that all of our voices are heard as we're making decisions for the state. So that's a lot of what I've kind of been doing. I also am brand-new. I feel like it's kind of terrifying to go into a year without Senator Ekin and Representative Marquardt when they brought, I mean, 20-some years of experience is something that I can never be caught up in in two years. And so I am finding pieces of information to do my homework on. So if there are things that are really important to you, I'll be the first to say I don't know everything about all the things, but I love learning. And so if you can send helpful information to me, information that can help me dig into things a little bit more, I know the score funding is something that we've really talked about, that was kind of one of those things that's like, what is this thing that everybody keeps talking about? So I did actually work with my research team to pull some information, so I'm more knowledgeable about where Clay County itself, where we sit, and how, you know, the state requirement is that we have local match funds of 25%, and we're matching like almost 70-some percent. And so learning the imbalance of things like that, again, like very surface level, and those things come from commissioners that give me heads up on the things that are really important to you all. So I just wanted to make sure that in this space, you know that I'm here, you know, my plan to be able to be back, I can't be here on Tuesday mornings. That's like, I was just saying, if I could figure out the art of being in multiple places at one time, I would share that magic trick with you all. But most likely, if there's Friday afternoon opportunities, maybe once a month for us to connect, or planning far enough in the future when I know you guys are coming to St. Paul, like it gets, our schedule just gets away from us so fast that I never want it to feel like I'm avoiding you all. It just gets so busy and so crazy that the calendars fill up. So I also want you all, before I leave, I'll give you all my cell phone number, too, so we're not stuck in the realm of just emailing. I've had five different legislative assistants, and so that's a cycle of scheduling nightmare that gets kind of out of control. But you and I have been in contact, so we at least have our connections. But I really do want to be a resource for you all, and I want to do the best that we can to uplift what the needs are for Clay County as well as just Morehead.
Well, thank you very much for that. I do want to say I know you were particularly helpful last year when we were discussing folks needing to stand outside at the COVID testing site. We were very responsive, and I think we met with the governor's office within 24 hours. So thank you for that. I also want to say the virtual option is incredibly helpful for us to be able to testify on. We've been in meetings with smaller counties and communities that because of the cost in gas reimbursement are now advising their commissioners to attend virtually when possible. And it is really not equitable to expect someone from Morehead to be able to drive down for a five-minute testimony. It's a voice that still needs to be heard. So I appreciate that there's hopefully going to be a lane for virtual testimony, because I think it is really quite important.
I think it increases the risk, too. I mean, just us on the road and these weathers in the winter, you know, increases a risk. Hotels are getting more expensive. If it's something, and I said this before, if it's something that you, as a commission, feel is important and would benefit your work, Speaker Melissa Hortman is in our leadership again, Representative Jamie Long is our majority leader, sending any sort of letter of support to them, I do think will help in the way that it's more than just my voice saying we need to do it, that there is benefit in that from across the board. That would be really beneficial, I think, in impacting the voice, or if you can share that in whatever other county kind of networks we have.
And this, I think this board has been quite open about making sure that we're copying all of our elected state leadership on either letters to the governor on some of our points or agendas, trying to keep you in the fold as much as possible. But certainly, we can work with Jackie. We, I think, know our legislative date already for Association of Minnesota Counties to just make sure we can forward to you. Not that we know exact schedules, but I live on a Google Calendar invite, so making sure we get you calendar invites. Any questions for Representative Keeler? Commissioner Kaylee?
Representative Keeler, so in that letter of support, we've talked a little bit in the past about how timing of things is important. Is there particular timing when that would be most impactful?
Now?
Right now?
I mean, because, so here's the process that we're in, right? We get elected, then our leadership gets elected, and right now, we're in the process of even developing who is on our committees. And so as they set that up, I think now is the prime time to do it, so that it can be ready to go in January. As you know, the cycle of session, the biggest time that we hear our testifiers and testimony is January to March, when we're listening to individual house files. And that's also like when the weather is the worst. And so we have meetings this afternoon, literally, I've been pushing this on every, like, I push it in the morning, I push it in the afternoon, I push it in the morning, I push it in the afternoon, because I think way too often in decision-making at the state level, because the majority of our representatives are from the metro area, it's easy to overlook what our needs are in Greater Minnesota, and I kind of just refuse to be swept under the rug about it and timed out. And so the sooner that we could get something to them, now that we know who leadership is, I think would be ideal.
And Madam Chair, I would move that we send a letter of support for flexibility of virtual meetings at the Capitol.
Okay.
Second.
Motion offered from Commissioner Kaylee, a second from Commissioner Campbell in regards to supporting the option for virtual testimony and meetings. Any?
So then the second part of that is, so that's for the state-level committee. I know that we've talked about it, you know, at commission levels as well. Keep me in the loop, that would have, that could be a legislative change if we want to move forward with something like that. Let me know. I would be happy to advocate for that, because, I mean, I am really trying to be the voice of accessibility and the voice at all tables that make decisions. So just let me know, and we can work on language around that. It almost feels like a nice.
Yeah. Let's vote on this one, and then I have a comment on that one particularly. Any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Now, the other piece, and I'm glad you brought that up, is that we are limited to the two. And that has become problematic as we're, people are still trying to operate under a being cautious if I'm under the weather type agreement, but two gets exhausted quite quickly. And that's become, I think, tricky more particularly at our MCC JPA, because that's a smaller committee that seems to be where it's problematic. And I do feel that over the course of two years, the people that have done that, I don't believe anyone's taken advantage of it. I mean, if you're, make it a commitment to call into a meeting when you're not there, that's an investment. So I don't think that I observe people taking advantage of that, but I think that's a requirement that's tricky. We're still having people identify their location, obviously, but sometimes the video requirement because of Wi-Fi availability or broadband is problematic, too. So just note those comments, I guess.
I think, too, when we talk about it with other counties, there really are like guardrails to it, right? Like not, that's not 100% virtual, and there's some sort of communication back with some sort of network or leadership. You know, it's not just like every day. But I do know that, like, how often do you guys meet? Every other week? You have sick, every week you have sick kids? I mean, there's life. We still have life. You all, we're all community members that still engage. And you're right, we do want to practice being home when we're not feeling well. We don't want to continue to spread whatever illnesses we have. But also surgeries, arm surgery, you know, healing after things like that, like how fast we have to be back in person when maybe we could take some more time. So yeah, honestly, let's work on it. If it's something, I know that other, as I've been bringing up the hybrid conversations, it is trickling down to some of these more regional and community areas as well.
Well, we have our Association of Minnesota Counties meeting in early December that we have policy platforms. Granted, those aren't all Clay County's platform requirement, or that we're pushing forward, but making sure we'll keep you in the loop on those. There are a couple of meetings that have popped up, if you're available to come to, that we feel would be helpful just as you're advocating for things in St. Paul. I know that Commissioner Campbell's on the Prairie Lake Solid Waste, that conglomerate with the different counties in Purim, the recycling center, and they've talked about having a potential site visit. There's some great things that they're doing to kind of divert waste and recyclables and that type of thing that they've talked about being helpful. If you could make it in December, obviously, we all know if schedules are insane, so if that's.
Do you know the date?
I do. Well, I think the date of the meeting is the 15th of December. If that's a Wednesday or Thursday.
Well, communicate with Jackie, and Jackie can get that.
If you can send me calendar invites, that's hugely helpful, because then I just click accept, and then it's on my calendar, rather than sending the information in an email.
Right. And I know Paul had talked to you about the soil and water one, if you're able to make that in December as well. But knowing that you've got a day that you're wanting to maybe earmark for conversations, we'll try to work with that as best possible. Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, I believe, once again, we're going to do the chamber trip up there. And last year was 15, you know, community members, elected officials. I think it's going to be even bigger this year, but it draws from all the cities within Clay County, and it's a pretty good group. You did get a chance to speak to us briefly, but I know it didn't make your calendar. I'm sure that we give you the date on that with plenty of heads up.
Yeah, and some of it, too, is, because I think when you guys came was a day, too, that, it was in May, right?
Yeah.
And so that gets tricky, because it's like, we're on the floor. I think our higher ed bill was on the floor that day. So. So, it, not that it's an excuse, but sending actual calendar invites will be huge, I believe, as I process.
Make sure it gets channeled through.
Yeah.
If we can, we give you plenty of notice.
Perfect. If you have food, that's always good, too.
Commissioner Campbell?
Well, thank you for your priorities that you've shared, and I certainly like your priority when it comes to childcare and foster care needs in our community. I think if we can help solve that, we can also help solve some of our workforce issues. So I think those two can kind of go hand in hand. I guess, from our standpoint, it'd be nice to hear from you periodically on what it is you're proposing to help improve on those shortages that we have. You know, what, are there, are there incentives, that additional incentives that could be talked about, that can encourage new, you know, and I know there's some talk with the thousand, it's pretty hard to have that all filled by just family daycare centers or childcare centers, but also then, you know, more of the business-type centers available, and what kind of incentives there would be there. That's something that would be, we'd be interested in hearing from you on as legislation moves forward.
Okay.
I think another thing that is always on our radar, that we share with our city of Morehead and the city of Delworth, is our border cities legislation. I believe that is, you know, I think it's fairly safe right now, but I, you know, I want to make sure, we would want to make sure that that certainly doesn't change, if anything, improved.
Yeah.
You know? And then, the remote work, I think, is a great, great thing that you're doing. And then, you talked about SCORE, that continues to be something that, that solid waste management tax, you know, we get a very small percentage of the solid waste tax. Most of it goes to the general fund of this, in the state of Minnesota. And another issue that's coming up, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, we're members of the Prairie Lake Solid Waste Group, as well as we have our own landfill here. And one of the big things that's starting to surface, it's more and more, is PIFAs or PFAS.
PFAS, yeah.
That's, it's, you know, it's a big issue, but we also have concerns as a landfill and as a waste or energy facility of what legislation goes on there. And I, so I think it would be important, you know, for you to keep us updated on legislation that you see coming forward there that could have an impact on either our landfill or the Prairie Lake Solid Waste Facility. And I know that that comes from different products that are manufactured.
Yeah.
And so, the, you know, I think the issue there should be more on, you know, if it's a public health concern, maybe the product shouldn't be used.
Correct.
As opposed to trying to put the burden on the landfills and all those other places to figure out the problem and do it after the fact. So, I guess those are my, and then, by the way, he mentioned that the chamber has a Capitol Day. We, as a county, also have a Capitol Day, and I believe that is in February or March.
Earlier in the session.
Okay.
And it's, that's, that's an opportunity where all of us have an opportunity to be there, and we usually try to schedule meetings with our legislators, but we can also let you know about that. And I know you might be in and out of meetings.
Once I know my committee calendar, that helps, too. If I get the committees I requested, I'll have my entire Wednesday morning open, which is something I didn't have the last time. But that'll be good timing. What'd you say, February-ish usually?
I believe, I believe it's the end of February, maybe.
Okay.
We, I don't have it right now, but it's either end of February or early March, I think, is the, and that's the Association of Minnesota Counties.
AMC.
AMC.
That's good timing, only because that's before our first deadline, you know, with bills and the cycle. So, it would be really nice, because at that meeting, we could maybe go over what house files are actually in the process of moving, what bills we can watch to support. As far as PFAS, it's interesting, because I'd never heard of that, like, and don't ask me to say the actual, like, whole word, because it's like, we're just going to call it PFAS. It's the forever chemical that doesn't ever go away, and one, it's like in our Teflon, it's in our makeup, it's in our packaging. And that's where, like, as a state, I think sustainability-wise, when we look at growing hemp, and this is a whole different conversation, hemp for our agriculture business is great, only because it changes the nitrogen so well that it actually increases the yield for other things. But hemp as a fiber could be used as packaging, and it's more sustainable, and it doesn't have any PFAS, it doesn't have this forever chemical, because the biggest issue I see is our water treatment plants. It's impossible to clean up, and it's just this cycle, then we're using it, it's in our water, and then we're, you know, watering our soil and the crops that we're growing. Like, it's just a cycle of toxicity that I agree we really need to address. So I can send you, we have a bunch of PFAS bills that go through the Environment Natural Resources. I'd be happy to send you house files, too, if that's easy. You know, not only just the bill, but then you can track the house files and where they're going, if you feel like then you would want to write a letter of support or, you know, in testimony. I can be better, most likely just send you that, and then you can disperse it when some of those come up, if that's helpful for you.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I, you know, I know, like our Prairie Lakes, it's five counties that go together that were involved in this, and we're very concerned about what legislation might come up that could impact our ability to remain.
Right.
You know, viable, so, yeah.
And back to the daycare thing. So some of the things that we've worked on already, you know, one of the first barriers when we talk to them, when we talk to different organizations and groups, is actually the background check process. So if you have anybody on your background, or if you have a state outside of Minnesota, we have to wait for the other state. And this is one thing Commissioner Kaylee and I really worked on, and I think you met with the governor's office as we followed up on it, that we were losing a lot of our interested employees, because they were waiting for weeks for a background check. Well, in that time, they would find something else to go and do. So, we really tried to do our best to break it down, like, the daycare crisis is ginormous. You know, what are some of those pieces? So the very first piece that we've tried to address is the background check, because we have the brick and mortar in some of our capacity, some of our centers have space. We just need to get employees in there, that's step one. And if we're not even getting past the background check, the same with nurses, you know, that's like that first weird barrier. So, it's a domino effect of some of the things we're working on. That's, that's one thing. The other piece that I would really like to address is gap funding. How can we close the gap between what we're able to pay employees over here versus what daycare employers can pay across the bridge, so at least we're competitive in our own community? We see that in a lot of spaces, too. We're sitting on a massive surplus, and I think we do need to be able to get some of these, you know, individuals paid at a rate that's comparable. I mean, why wouldn't you go across the bridge if you could make $2 to $3 more an hour? That's pretty significant.
That's a perfect reason why we have border cities legislation.
Yeah.
And you might have, you might have a hard time without tying it to that, to convince Minneapolis-St. Paul legislatures about gap funding for here.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's just the nature of the beast, when you get to St. Paul, and there's different areas of thing. But, but one of the things that, that we do have is that border cities issues. But anyway, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea.
And we'll continue to meet with the groups. I mean, and really, like, I hear from them what their suggestions are, because they know that, that system best, and where they're meeting some of those things. Lastly, I think I missed that we are looking at how to support mental health, especially in our youth, with accessibility to beds. I know that we just, when we don't have the beds that we need, a couple of things happen. We either move our youth to a community outside of our own, and we start to filter into other communities' resources, which we know our youth heals the best when they're in our own communities and surrounded by the people that they love. Or, we see individuals maybe end up at the juvenile detention center, because that's a facility that we have space, but the truth is, that's not really the services and the environment that's needed. So really, working on what is our big ask? If we could make like a dream ask for what psychiatric beds for youth look like here, for mental health support, what that looks like here, like, what could we build here so that we're able to support our youth with those needs, rather than sending them to other communities? We're really, really trying to address that. And then, lastly, I think I said lastly a couple of times, but I think this really is my lastly, is Narcan training. It's one of the things that we've chatted about. I know it's a need in our community. We have, we've been utilizing some Fargo training, and they're, it's just getting too expensive out of their pocket that they really would like us to move it. Over here, knowing where our law enforcement stands, we really believe that we have to implement some sort of Narcan training, because we have community asking for it. So really, working at some funding. I don't know if you were all able to find some funding for that, or if we need to continue to move on a state level, but that's also one of my priorities that I forgot to mention.
And on that, I, the sheriff's office isn't here. I think the sheriff's deputies carry Narcan.
They do, Madam Chair.
Agreed. I think there needs to be a community component to that.
We've, we've discussed this, and right now, the Lotus Center is seriously understaffed in what they're doing, but they've done a lot of training. I think they've trained all the public health, or public housing people, they've trained, had big trainings in MSUM, but I think that we need to do some more support of that effort and helping them expand it. Some state funding would be critical. Local, the municipal law enforcement, you got kind of a mixed response on carrying Narcan. The argument has been put forward that keeping it warm in the winter and cool in the summer, so you can be sure of efficacy is an issue, particularly when you've got cars that are being shared. But, you know, the response time you've got in the city of Morehead is a lot quicker with fire rescue and ambulance than you've got out in rural Clay County. So our deputies, I believe, are carrying it because of the response time issue. But the more people we train and the more accessibility we've got, the better off we are. And I think some funding and some policy decisions here need to be directed. I think a good place to start is trying to form a partnership with Lotus. But some state funding would be critical of that, too.
I was just at the Recovery Reimagined that North Dakota Governor Burgum and his wife put on, and you walk in, and there's free Narcan right there, and there's so many different community partners. Granted, that's on the North Dakota side. It would be, I think, good to have a conversation on how we could duplicate what they're trying to do over here as well, but, you know, very, very important pieces. The final, final, maybe, before we do it. The continuation of support for county program aid is imperative to our boards, because it does reduce what the levy requirements will be, and it allows us to do more locally, to fund those really important programs, to not have the hard conversations with our department heads about cuts. But any support you can continue to give counties, to continue to do the work, because we are so much an arm of what the state requirements are, is just really important.
I knew that. I think it was extremely enhanced during COVID to see how much our counties stepped up and really were able to supply community-specific supports. So, absolutely. Those are things that you need to let me know, too, like what areas of funding we need to look at. Like, I don't know how all of the funding works, if you just get a lump sum, like a general fund, and then it's up to you to allocate, or if things come with earmarks for you, just be sure to let me know what areas we are really feeling like we're missing and need more support.
Yeah, we can definitely have those conversations on how we utilize that.
Yeah. And those are some of those, you know, Friday afternoon. I know it gets tricky, because we can't all meet because of meeting requirements, but, you know, how maybe every other Friday, a couple of us could get together and really, like, whatever is kind of topic or things we want to address, so that all of us are building that work relationship as well.
And we have not, or we have supported in the past, if there's important conversations that it's important that we all are part of, I don't have a problem calling a special meeting and advertising that conversation. Because if we, to have all five of us part of that discussion, we'll just put it on the calendar. If it's more a committee-specific, narrow-focus conversation, we don't need to do that. But certainly, if a Friday afternoon works, let's pull the partners in and advertise it, and it's fine.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate it. Item six today, right on the dot on time, is committee reports. Commissioner Evinger, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see, Tuesday the 15th, following the commission meeting, myself and Commissioner Gross assisted with the election canvassing. Later that day, I went with Commissioner Kaylee to the Clay County Adult Mental Health meeting for a presentation by the correction facility staff on their efforts in adult mental health. Man, I got my notes in here backwards, if you'll bear with me. Busy week. Boy, the short version is, it was a very good presentation on the response they have with the River Project, which has been noted in some of the meetings that I've had with public safety, with AMC, as an example of what other counties should be doing, getting mental health services into correctional facilities. And the next step is out into law enforcement in their response. So these are good, that was a good conversation. I want to, I want to acknowledge Carrie Tooten, Katie Johnson, and Bree Greewall, all employees of the correctional facility, and I believe I got her name right. Greiner? Greiner. Bree Greiner. Really good employees. We're lucky to have people with this amount of commitment and the hard work that they do, and it's paying off for the people that are in that facility, as far as addressing some of their mental health needs. And later that day, I, myself, Commissioner Mojo, and Commissioner Kaylee attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC Annual Meeting, highlighted some of the EDC's priorities, and several local businesses, they profiled them as success stories. On Thursday the 17th, virtually attended the Clay County Suicide Prevention and Substance Abuse Committee, school counselor Merritt, again, can't read my own writing, Merritt cash mark, I believe, discussed the sources of strength suicide prevention training that's been taught in some of the schools in the county and is currently being implemented or at high school. We also looked at Faith Seidler, an advocate, presented the North Dakota 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which should, she represented, should be fairly close to the figures that we would get in Clay County, very similar demographics. Just looked at some of the impact that the LGBT students have had and their higher risk for suicide. Jason McCoy gave an update on the positive messaging in his program at DGF Schools, and we discussed, Morehead Alternative Learning Center has initiated a calming room for their students, and they gave orientation to students the previous week. And that night, I attended the Lake Ag City Regional Library Board of Trustees meeting, we had a general business meeting, then nominations committee presented a list of members for the executive committee and officers. Result of that, I will be on the executive committee again next year. Friday the 18th, I attended with Commissioner Gross, Partnership for Health Meeting at Family Services, had the annual appointment of officers. I want to congratulate Commissioner Gross, he's our chairman again this year.
Lucky you.
In a hotly contested competition. We discussed the financial audit, there were no issues, legislative priorities. We had a partnership discussion on vacation home rental issues. That's not a big issue with Clay or Wilkin County, but it is a huge issue with Otter Tail and Becker Counties. They have a lot of vacation rental property, and we discussed some of the issues. And we discussed some of the issues that they have. There's also a visiting nurse program that's done among the partnership that is, was pretty impressive. They gave us some information on it for prenatal and childcare for the first two years. Making sure I haven't missed something here. And then yesterday, with all the commissioners and Steve, we, and a number of staff, we attended the Clay County Association of Township Officers Meeting. I won't walk us too far in the weeds on that. I just want to say, it is really impressive to see our staff. And when they're presenting to the elected officials throughout, from the townships throughout the county, their knowledge of the concerns that these officials have, their knowledge of what we're doing here, and their ability to present it is really impressive. And the feedback, some of the, some of the township officers gave about their interaction, particularly, you know, our, our highway personnel that go out, just some of the things that they've done. It was very good to, to get that feedback from people. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebbinger. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On November 15th, we had the ARPA committee meeting. We had a few different items that were presented to us. One was Place for Hope. They had some rental increases that were brought onto them for next year with the difficulty in absorbing that rental cost. We also heard from, heard about a childcare and family resource center in the Romke Park area. Trenton Jarred's from the Cass County Community Land Trust and Megan Jensen from Creative Community Consulting did a, had a presentation for us. And we also revisited the CAP LP Senior Transportation. That's, was in need, also in need of funding. And I'm not sure, did we have recommendations on those?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, we did, we were looking for some additional information on both the Place for Hope and the childcare discussion.
Right.
And we, next week, we will, we will be bringing forward the senior transportation for consideration.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you. I did not finish my notes very good there. On November 16th, we had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste Meeting. That facility is in good, good financial shape as, which is a good thing. We approved the 2021 Audit and Management Audit Letter, the Plant Managers Report. There's nothing major going on there. There was a one incident where a motor went out that caused the whole circuit breaker system to fail and it went dark for a little while, with the exception of the control room. And so there was about a $5,000 motor that had to be fixed. We continue to have these conversations about PFAS and we're going, they're still looking forward to, or looking at bringing forward a drug and alcohol policy moving forward. On the Thursday, November 17th, Solid Waste Advisory met. We had reports from, a facility update from construction engineers. Ben Madsen was there. Corey Bang gave an update on landfill activities. And then I gave an update to them regarding the perm meeting as well. That same day, we also had the Morehead-Clay County Joint Powers Authority Meeting. There was a couple of minor actions on there. One, one thing we did get was a report on the, from Peggy Harder on the Minnesota Project Center that we asked about. And, and one of them would be, one of the reports we got is the area around Wolverton, even though it's, even though it's not in Clay County, it's still part of our, our Minnesota concerns with moving forward. So we got an update on, on where they're at with those ring levy options for, for Wolverton, working with that community. We also heard for some of the cemeteries and the mitigation efforts that are going on there. And it appears that they've come up with a solution that's agreeable with the cemeteries. And then we had a couple of appraisal waivers. In other words, there's small, there's options that we had to settle a couple of small, different appraisals moving forward without going through a, a big appraisal process. These are on like a .16 acre of land or something like that, so. And then we did some, we did approve some last, or moving expenses to finish off a, a particular purchase. And then there was another one where we had to secure some property buildings that we had acquired. That same day, we all said the diversion board of authority meeting. We did receive the executive director report, a report from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And I have to say, it was probably the shortest diversion authority meeting we've ever had. I think it was like, it was like 20 minutes, I think.
It was short enough to where I forgot to mention it in my report, but I also attended that meeting as well.
And then also, then I attended the Township Officers Meeting yesterday morning. It's always interesting to, to hear from them. One of the, I think one of the interesting things is being able to, even on the breaks where you can get up and talk individually with some of them and hear what, what certain ones might have issues on, where they might not bring it up to the whole group, so. And then yesterday afternoon, we did have a owners' meeting regarding the Resource Recovery Facility. And the issues right now that's of significance is getting the gas line into the building, you know, with this weather that we've had. They're getting close to getting there. Other than that, I think they're, they're moving along. I think they, we did get, now we're probably looking at two or three weeks into January, you know, before they might be able to be completed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Gross.
Tuesday, as Commissioner Ebbinger said, we had the election canvassing. Tuesday night, I attended the planning commission meeting. As was stated before, this, this room was full of people. There was a letter that went out concerning overlays on the gravel stuff. So presented a lot of interest in the community. Wednesday, well, we had Colleen's retirement. Well, attended there. And then Friday, we had the Partnership for Health, which Commissioner Ebbinger discussed. There again, they had the, there's been a lot of visits going on, on first time mothers in need, visiting. So it's done by the nursing program and it's popular and they're doing a lot of visitations there. And yesterday, the township meeting, and again, I also want to say, as Commissioner Ebbinger said, I really want to thank the supervisors that we had, we had a good representation, good reports. And I really appreciate those people showing up because they really make that meeting. So that's, like I say, I want to thank the supervisors for being there. They did a good job. Those are the meetings. I, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tuesday last week, we had our Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. I know Commissioner Ebbinger reported on this a little bit, but I did want to note a few things that came to light in that meeting. So they talked a little bit about the Rule 20 process in jail. This is when somebody is deemed incompetent to proceed with the justice system. According to state statute, DHS has 48 hours to find a placement for civil commitments for these folks, but it's currently taking over three months. And what's happening is these folks will be sent to a state hospital or similar facility. And where they should be engaged in a competency restoration program, what really is happening is they're just being stabilized and then sent back out to a community, to a county. And then the counties are being told to find a competency restoration program for them. Unfortunately, we do not have competency restoration programs, nor is there a funding structure for them in our counties. So these individuals are not getting the help that they need and are lots of times winding back up, being justice-involved again. So that's something we definitely need to pay attention to. Yeah, I'll, I'll stop there with that one. But I was really impressed with our jail administration and the care and the dedication they have to wanting to provide the best mental health services possible within their, their capacity in our jail. It was, they laid out the process of all of the different evaluations that they do from the moment somebody arrives in the Sally Port and steps out of the vehicle to the regular checks and how they're watched and cared for. And I just really thank them for taking care of our folks and trying to ensure that they leave better than they came. I also attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead Economic Development Annual Meeting. That's been reported on well. That day, I also attended the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County Meeting. We had some, just general business, looked at future board member possibilities and replacing one governance committee member who has had to resign. We did also take a tour of the Clay County Archives with Mark Peel, where he showed a lot of the information that's in there and how they've used it in the past. One interesting item that I noted was the jail register from the early 1900s. And when they noted what people were justice-involved for at that time is pretty similar to what folks are justice-involved for now. There was a lot of alcohol-related issues. The next day, so this would be Thursday, I chaired the West Central Initiative Economic Development District Board Meeting. And we looked at the revolving loan funds as well as had an update on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. I can share that document with Steve or Jackie to go out to the board if you're interested in those focus areas. There was resilient infrastructure as a priority, circular agricultural and food systems, equity and inclusion work were just some of the items highlighted there. We also had a presentation from Matt, Ben Winchester, who works with U of M Extension. And he, his presentation was on rural leadership in Minnesota. And so he looked at data from our nonprofit boards and our government entities to see how many leaders are needed in rural areas, what that ratio is. In Clay County, one in 26 people are needed to serve on a, as a nonprofit leader or in a local government capacity. When you would compare that to like the Twin Cities Metro, it's one in 326. So the leadership development needs of rural Minnesota and the implications of what those nonprofits are, what the new ones are, it was just really interesting. And so I shared that information with both Steve and Kevin as a possibility for a future, maybe intergovernmental presentation. Their implications for succession planning for rural leadership that I thought were very impactful. Then on Friday, I attended our Early Childhood Initiative Meeting. We looked at the dental grant and programming they have that will be coming up with that in January. There will be a fun, family educational outreach event to be held at the Morehead Library. And then we also looked at Kids Fest, which is one of their largest annual events. And we chose a tentative date for that and location as well. On Saturday, on behalf of the Historical and Cultural Society Board, I worked at the Pangea Event. There were over 800 people that attended that at the Yem Comp Center. It's just a really great celebration of some of the cultures that make up this beautiful mosaic we have in Clay County, featuring song, dance, arts, food, lots of food, and just really great community connection with folks. So thank you to everyone that participated in that beautiful event celebrating our diversity. And finally, I also attended the Clay County Township Officers Meeting, which has been reported on well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Last week, I also attended the ARPA committee conversation in regards to the items that were before that board. There will be some questions on additional information for the, two of the presentations and then asking for this board to support a continuation of the rural routes, funding the rides for seniors within Clay County. I also attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC Annual Board Meeting. I appreciate that they held that on the Clay County side of the river. It's great to have those folks over there. They really are in partnership with the Chamber and the other partners with that, really doing a lot to attract and retain business to our community. I also appreciate they're having conversations about the hard components of that, the workforce challenges and the childcare challenges. That's important for us to address as well. That evening, I attended the Planning Commission Meeting. There was an IUP for Earthwork Services, a gravel permit that was approved. We did have some conversation internally. I think Commissioner Campbell had brought up some concerns in regards to its location close to our landfill. There were no concerns with that impeding with the development and workings of the landfill. We had a large public hearing on the rezoning and text amendments to the developmental code. Really great to see so many individuals from the public participate in that meeting. The hope is that with the changes, it will really, initially, when that was done, it was done to protect our environmental resources and it did a great job of that. One of the members of that planning committee was present in, from the meeting on Tuesday and really said, we did what we could to protect that. And sometimes when you have a blanket development code, there's some unintended consequences. And what we're doing right now is just cleaning that, that piece up. Any future development still has to go through the proper permitting and planning, open hearing progress, but it will allow that progress to go forward. On the 29th, I believe, we will be having that hearing at the, this board level. The next day, I attended the Prairie Lakes Committee Meeting that Commissioner Campbell reported on. We did talk, as alluded to, making, about including the newly-elected and, and current-serving legislative representatives from the state level to go in and have an understanding of what they do there. I, I too, when I first was elected, had no idea what we did there. I, I explain it to my kids as the, the Toy Story when there, there's a conveyor belt and the recyclables are coming out, the glass and the, how you separate the trash. And really, it has changed the lifespan of our landfill, which I think as short as 10 years ago, we were only looking at a 20-year lifespan of that. And we've, over that course of time, more than doubled what that is because of using, separating the recyclables. The next day, I attended the MetroCog Board Meeting. General business on the agenda. We did talk about moving forward because we will be needing We did talk about moving forward because we will be needing to advertise for a new Executive Director. We did talk about that and talked about, always in November, it's, in December, it seems that that meeting conflicts with the diversion authority. Everyone's kind of moving things around because of holidays, so we did barely have a quorum. But there are a lot of big plans in the process, and MetroCog is doing some great things. I also attended the MCC JPA Meeting that afternoon. As Commissioner Campbell said, we, it was a shorter meeting. We did adjust, or approve some of those short order items and had really great updates on the Wolverton potential ring levy, the Georgetown mitigation, and the, there's one other, the Clara Cemetery mitigation. I, I maintain that that was probably the most information that we've had in a long time on those particular components. That's probably, I know Commissioner Campbell probably has more questions from folks up north about the Georgetown piece, but I was able to finally forward some of those plans to residents. And I'm happy to see that they're really taking their concerns into account with the plans. I had some correspondence with a resident out in eastern Clay County that was wondering about the process of a potential lake name change. We were able to connect him with our planning director and forward the statute requirements if he'd like to carry that forward. And then yesterday, also attended the Township Officers Meeting. I maintain that that is one of the best meetings for us to hear directly from those elected officials at that, the township level. There, as you say, sometimes you get more information out of those breaks in between presentations on questions. There was a question that came forward to me that I did not have the answer to about beaver trapping and if there's a bounty on beavers within Clay County. I do know that particularly when there's a disruption with the ditch system, not only does the Wild Rice Ditch Watershed District in northern Clay County, but the Buffalo Red Watershed District in southern Clay County offers that if you're able to help mitigate that on the ditch system. And then some individual townships alone deal with that. And then also, I attended a transfer station construction committee meeting. It's, there's so much that we've accomplished, but it seems like there's a lot on the task order still, but hopeful that we can keep marching through. I think the biggest component right now is making sure we get XL to get the line in there so that we're not continuing to pay propane because it's just an exorbitant cost right now, but, and that seems to be a slow process. But yes, we also had conversation about the transition. I think yesterday was the first transition meeting between the city of Morehead and Clay County about how exactly that will go for operations. So that's an exciting step forward in that. And then that concludes, completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the ARPA Meeting that has been well-covered. On the 16th, we had a Strive Meeting. Again, our focus has been recruitment and retention. Probably be bringing some ideas to pick here in the coming weeks. We also started to put together a spring retreat and some recruit and retention. Again, our intergovernmental retreat is going to focus on workforce, and so we're being conscious to make sure that we're not doubling up on that, but looking at some different ways to, to attract and retain, or attract and retain our employees. On the, the 16th, I met with, with Colleen and Jackie and Sarah one final time to go through some of the responsibilities, job responsibilities at last, last questions. Participated in GIS, GIS Day. Again, our GIS, GIS department plays an important role in our mapping, emergency planning, remonumentation. And one of the interesting things they had that day was they showed our, our Clay County campus in 2015, and then you could just move a line to show what it looks like, like, looks like today. And it was, it was pretty, pretty neat to see how our campus has adjusted over the last five, six years. I participated also in Colleen's retirement. We would like to wish her well, and thank her for all of her years of service. Seventeenth, participated in the SWAC Meeting that's been, been covered. That day, we also worked closely with Jackie and Sarah to get our board packet, their first one done for this week. Participated in the MCC JPA Meeting that again, has been well, well-covered. Again, just a note for the public, we'll be meeting a half hour later under December 15th meeting, rather than 1:00, we'll be meeting at 1:30, and Notice will reflect that. Friday, I had a phone conversation with Burns and Mack in regards to the Resource Recovery Facility. Yesterday, I participated in the Township Officers Annual Fall Conference, and again, thanking our staff for, for taking the time out to participate there and share their knowledge. Participated in the Resource Recovery, again, that's been covered. Just one thing of note, in addition to the transition meeting yesterday, this board has approved an agreement with the city of Morehead in regards to that facility and MOU in regards to the transfer station. We'd kind of talked about once we knew a closing or an operational date, and also as we moved through, there, there might be some additional changes. And so just so the board's aware, you have approved that agreement, but we'll be probably coming forward here in the coming weeks with some tweaks, tweaks to that. And as we know, that, the final opening date for, for what we propose is a three-year contract with the city of Morehead. Mentioned the IGR, we did make a final decision. Intergovernmental Retreat will be on January 20th. It will be held here at the Law Enforcement Center. In the event that we have inclement weather, we do have a backup date of February 3rd. So just keep note, there'll be information coming out, more about that, but just wanted to get that in your calendars. And also, just a reminder to, to our citizens that generally, we do not have meetings on the 5th Tuesday, but next week, we will be having a meeting at a regular time. But noting that we won't have one meeting on December 6th because this board will be at the AMC Conference. But that concludes my report.
Item of note, housekeeping, the county campuses will be closed on Thursday and Friday of this week, so that if you are needing to have anything done on campus, make sure that you're aware of that. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.